We'll start out with the pledges.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain an adjustment to the agenda.
I would add a 12th agenda item for executive session where a premature disclosure may put the city out of this range.
Do we have a motion from Chad as their second?
Second.
Second pledge of the flag if you want to do executive session. Any comments, a little bit in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we'll start with public comments. Tom, you got any? Chip, you got any?
City's looking alright.
Marty?
What?
Peter, got any public comments?
We're moving along.
So we're going to move to item number three, Planning and Development Report. Considered recommendation to change height regulations in the Service Industrial District. Chip, thank you for coming in.
As you know, the St. Albans Quaker Creamery has merged with Dairy Farmers of America and some of what we saw in the lead up to that vote was that DFA would be able to help the creamery expand its operations, you know, get into new markets and so on and so forth. Their engineers, both the creameries and DFAs, have looked at what's next for that site and they've concluded that the type of silos they have to bring in for the next stage of capacity there are higher than the, what we allow in the Service Industrial District under a waiver by the DRB. Right now, if you get a waiver from the DRB, you can go up to 85 feet in height and the kind of technologies they're looking at are silos that are around 100 feet or more. And when they did an analysis of all the things they might have to add, catwalks and stuff, they think that, they made a request that we consider going up to 105 if you get a waiver from the DRB. I think it's, I think it's something that we could design that would work out pretty well and allow for the expansion of the site and perhaps others that it needed. I looked around for other tall structures. I think the co-op's current silos are around the 85 foot height pretty much or something like that. But we've got two grain elevators in the city, both are at 120 or more. So there is some precedent for having storage or movement structures like that that aren't meant for human occupancy, but they're meant for manufacturing type things. They go up pretty high. What I'm suggesting is that the city council make a request to draft the change and then we run it through the process, have the planning commission hold their hearing for comments, see if they have any suggested edits, that sort of thing, bring it back to the council for your two hearings on the potential change.
I agree. I think, I mean, I've got constituents on Federal Street that might want to chime in on this too. I don't know.
We took a lot of heat when we allowed them to increase the height of that grain elevator. Marty, were you mayor then? When they did that, were you on the, were you on the board?
Yeah.
Were you on the DRB with me then or were you mayor?
Mayor.
You were mayor? And I remember, I remember getting some heat for that from the up, from, from the upper side of St. Albans. Not so much from people in Jimmy's ward, but yeah.
The hill section, that was.
Yeah, yeah. And, I don't know, a silo is a big thing, you know, it's not, it's, they're big. And they take up a lot of space, they can interfere with a good portion of the view from the upper side of St. Albans, so. And I don't know if that's worth it or not, but we, you know, I just don't want us to haphazardly go into, yeah, let's do it because it's the co-op. Yeah, I like the co-op, they're good neighbors and as long as we take a good look at it, make sure everyone gets a fair shot to take a look at it rather than just try and run it through the process. I remember we took, we took some heat on that grain elevator.
When I looked at that case, and we can look at it more in terms of what we heard, but one of the things about that one is that we had to do it as very.
It was after. It was, it was after we did it. And a lot of people were saying, well, if I didn't know it was going to be like this or if I knew it was going to look like that, that's, that's what we, that's what we took for heat. It wasn't the people that came for the hearing, alright? Because I, a lot of people said we didn't even know there was a hearing. So, just, I'm just throwing that out there. And I, and I do like the idea that it's, so what's it going to be, conditional use process? For the waiver?
Yeah, I guess it would, it would, it would have to be part of the site plan process, but it would be a DRB hearing although you wanted to get the mail in, you know, it's the DRB process.
And that, and that may have been the problem, the abutters got the notices and the, the people that actually, it affected their view, did not get the notice. And so they didn't have a chance to come in. And I think that is where the problem might have lied back then.
Yeah.
So, take a look at that when you're looking at this.
Well, as part of our look, we might be able to have, see if the creamery is able to do some visuals that would show us what the difference would be like. Their silos, right, it would probably only be 15 feet higher than their current silos. So, we could use that as a context and see what the impact might be.
Well, if, if anyone wants to take a look at it, go up to, I call it the old Governor Smith insight, and look down and take a look at the grain elevator and imagine a set of silos, you know, 100 feet away, in the same, in proximity of the same area, so, and have them there.
Yeah.
Big round silos there and see, see what you think. And that, that might be a good way to take a look at it.
The proposal here is not as tall as that grain elevator.
Right, it's not. That's 105 feet and these silos are going to be 80, right? Are you 80 feet on the pad?
No, the, we're asking, the request here is for 100, to go up to 105 feet.
Okay.
The grain elevator is 120.
120, okay, so is that, is that 105? Okay, so only 105, not 105 on the pad?
105 from the ground to the top.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, a little bit lower and you'll get a good idea about it.
No, we hear your concerns.
And are they replacing the ones that are there or no?
I don't know. I don't know.
There's a lot we need to know about this yet.
Yeah, I mean, sure, let's, let's accommodate them as much as we can.
Yeah.
But let's just make sure that everyone gets a fair shot at it.
Peter, is this, are you working on this?
Yes, I am.
Do I speak too?
Sure, I can address a couple of these items. First of all, no, I don't believe they are replacing existing silos. The DFA wants to modify the operations of the creamery to follow good manufacturing practices, GMPs they call them. And that means that they don't mix different types of milk in the same silo as they are currently doing. So, there's a silo for whole milk, there's a silo for skim, et cetera. Currently, I understand it, they do wash a silo and they, they use it for other types of milk as they need to for storage. So that's why they need additional silos and to be efficient, they need taller silos with greater volume because it is a pretty small site down there. There's not a lot of room. They are planning on adding another building down there for receiving vehicles, tanker trucks mostly to unload the milk. So, it's a small site and they need to use it efficiently. And using taller silos is one way to do that. Now to, Tim's question, I believe, is the silos won't be 105 feet tall themselves, they're, they're on a concrete pad that's about four feet off the ground and then there is a catwalk and railings on top. So, I expect the silos will be about 95 feet themselves and then by the time we get them installed with the catwalk, it could approach 105.
Where do they anticipate putting them, Peter?
They'll be in front or near the existing tall stainless steel silos. There's three down there now that are 70 footers, which are about 80 feet once they're installed. So there's three there now and these, as I understand it, these new ones would go pretty much in the same location, probably in front, towards Federal Street. But I don't think the site plan's been formalized yet.
Any other questions for Peter?
So we're still a ways, we're still a ways anyway, so.
If I could just explain the schedule, the goal is to be ready next spring to start construction on this project. And we can't move forward with permitting under the current zoning bylaw because of the height limit of 85 feet. So the very first step is to ask the council to modify the bylaw and the planning commission to modify the bylaw. Once that's modified, then we can move forward with site plan approval to the, from the DRB and we also have Act 250 approval. So we're pretty much on a, in a holding pattern until this issue is addressed by our end.
Which is interesting because Act 250 would give a lot of other avenues for public input for this case.
From my education, for the DRB could, could approve a waiver without the change?
Right now, the most that the DRB can approve a waiver for is 85 feet. Basically unless you get a variance, which I don't see being likely in this current regime, especially with the variance rules that the Latin States statute, you wouldn't be able to go higher than 85 feet. This allows for any case in which someone wants to go higher, whether it's 85 now or 100 or whatever might get approved, that they have to go before the DRB and have a conversation, the abutters get nailed, abutters get warning, hearings, hearing notices, the DRB has a conversation with the applicant about, you know, so justify to us why you want to go higher than the typical allowed heights.
So, Chip is asking that we consider a motion to request that staff draft an amendment allowing the 105 foot height waiver in the Service Industrial District and refer it to the planning commission for a hearing and their comments. Is there anyone who would like to make that?
Second.
Okay. Here's Kate, second.
Michael?
Yes.
Here's Mike and Kate with motion. Any other comments on that motion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chip, do you have? If we're going to move forward?
Thank you.
We have South Main Street.
City has heard a lot of comments from different, different folks in the area of South Main Street and the state, St. Albans State Highway, which we call the SASH, which is a road that gets you from South Main to 19th. There is a crosswalk where the SASH meets South Main, but it is rather wide and there's a lot of traffic with turning movements in that area. Basically commuter traffic at the same time that children are trying to cross that crosswalk to get to the St. Albans Town Educational Center. And there have been various different ideas pitched to city staff that I've heard anyway. I don't know if any of you have had any contact with folks about if we could add crosswalks to the area to get students over one side and then get them back over to the other side where SATEC is and, you know, just different ideas. You may recall that there is a long-term plan to have a traffic signal out there if the Federal Street connector is ever completed. But we don't know when that's going to happen. It's not something I would count on to solve what people might think is an imminent safety situation right now, so. You know, there are some options, we could put a pedestrian island at the, at the bottom of the SASH, we could consider a three-way stop, we could add crosswalks. There have been other requests for crosswalks on South Main, around Max, around the industrial park, places like that. So, I talked to Dom and we were wondering if the city council would just authorize us to get some experts, some engineers on board to go over different options for dealing with some of these pedestrian issues around the SASH and South Main. Do you think current, currently budgeted funds?
What, I mean, what times are these problems? Just during the school session?
Yeah, you're right. Most, most times we're hearing about the children.
Yeah.
They're actually walking in various different ways from those residential areas in the town.
I see them every morning, yeah, I'm there.
Yeah.
I'm there.
They have to come there and that's the point, which they have to cross the SASH to get to the other side.
And they have to go home too.
Right, and I think it's worse at some times than others for sure.
And it's 35 miles an hour out there?
It's 35 on South Main and 50 on the SASH.
Do you ever ride around in some of the villages and towns where they have a blinking light that says, when the light's blinking, the speed limit's only 20 and not 35 or something like that?
Well, yeah, well, I should, I should correct myself. SATEC does have a blinking light that drops it to 25.
Okay. Alright, I don't recall seeing that.
You know, I don't know if it goes as far south as the SASH though.
It doesn't, it goes north.
But it's around that area, yeah, it's there, yeah.
Part of the pedestrian crossing sign?
We are, we are looking at putting a pedestrian crossing sign in the crosswalk directly across from SATEC.
What is the flashing light associated with it?
With the strobe light, flashing lights?
No, the, what's out there right now is the school speed limit situation.
Those lights, no.
Yeah. When light is flashing, it, the speed limit's 25, that's what it is at the time.
And that's what I know is right now. That's, I've been advocating for the other side to sort of stop light.
So that's done, that's initiated budget and we're putting the pedestrian crossing in.
Yeah.
Did you still want one in front of your place?
Yeah, I do know.
We could just give you a back fact, Jim.
I'm going to be retired at the end of the year, I could drive trucks.
Will that not fix the problem?
Um, I think.
But that's, but that's not the, that's not the answer.
We don't know, we don't have anything for the bottom of the SASH yet.
Okay.
We're, we'd like to get some experts on board and give us some options, so you can look at the current situation, see where the problems are, answer the very question you asked Tim about, you know, when are these problems actually occurring and how bad are they? And then what are some of the ideas that we could implement quickly that could deal with this situation?
A three-way stop would be quick. I know that's not everybody's favorite, but it's better than a traffic light. But I think the, Tim's idea about the flashing lights when, you know, when they're flashing slows, reduces the speed because there's students coming, is a good idea. But that would be, can we, can we put something like that on that state access road though? Doesn't the state kind of govern what happens on there?
There's a, we'd have to engage them, but I think that, you know, I'm sure we can handle that.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion then to request a study for the SASH-South Main Street intersection pedestrian crossings.
Second.
Any other comments?
I'd love to see us do something about this. It's a really unsafe intersection.
I'm going to build off from Chad's comment to me a while back and I don't know if this is a little bit of a stretch, but I don't think it'd be that much more, but to look at that sidewalk scenario on Nace and down by the railroad tracks. We're sort of tying it all in, that sidewalk crossing, right, is that the one you're concerned about coming up Nace and so we're going to have town kids coming up through the city to get to and that sidewalk is?
It ends before the tracks.
Yeah, it ends before the tracks, there's no crossing there, there's no crosswalk. I think it's an easy fix if I won't add much to the scope of it, but maybe look at a little bigger scope if you're going to be looking at the whole picture.
Well, this is the second time today, Tim's told me we need to think a little bigger.
We have found that Dom is restricted in his thoughts.
There's so many voices in there. I think Dom makes me have the budget in mind as well.
So we have a motion on the floor, seconded. Any other comments? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, Chip, you have brownfield authorization.
Funding authorization. In June, when the sources of usage for the Congress to Main project were up for the council, you'll notice one of the lines did say NRPC and state brownfield loans. We've executed the loan with NRPC, the Regional Planning Commission for Brownfields and the state loan is just asking that we have the council motion specifically authorizing that loan. It's for $393,500, $393,003.
They couldn't round that out.
I'll make a motion, the city council authorize entering into the loan with VITA and the
state of Vermont for $393,503 toward the brownfield remediation for Congress to Main project.
Second. Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any questions for Chip?
Just out of curiosity, what are the terms like on a loan like that?
They're good.
Yeah.
They're all good.
They're great.
Any other questions? Motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip. Peter, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is allocation application for North Star's Masonry. I don't see where anyone is here for that. Do we want to move forward, is it fairly straightforward?
Yep. Move forward. How are you, what time are they scheduled for?
It's 6:50.
Okay, so that's what it is now.
Did we invite that person?
I told them about it right after, about their application, it was definitely due today.
Do you want to go to item five for a minute, see if they show up a couple minutes later?
Do we need to? I mean, I think it's a straightforward application.
Yeah, it's fine, do it.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
And will we approve the extraterritorial allocation application for North Star's Masonry?
We have a motion by Chad, seconded by Jim. Any questions for Dom or Kristen relative to this? So this is out of Franklin Park West. It would be a good addition to the, to the community, so. No other questions? All those in favor to Tim's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, motion passes.
Tom, you're up.
Actually, it was Chad's motion, wasn't it?
Chad's motion, I seconded.
Jim's seconded, yeah.
I tried to sneak in, didn't I?
So we had a reed soft memo in front of you some months back which gave staff some
additional responsibilities to come to council in terms of some routine matters of business. So at the last meeting, Tim suggested we go a little further and there were some head nods in the room. So we put together some dollar amounts. Probably your, your reaction is they're really low and the reason for that is one of the primary roles that we have to do upstairs in accounting is fraud prevention. The ironclad way to prevent it, first off, the history of fraud and local governance always starts small and if folks aren't looking to keep a close eye on the checkbook, it accumulates. 50 bucks sounds really low, but the ironclad way to prevent it is then is at the end of the month, every bank account is balanced with a penny, the same way you would balance your home and go through every transaction. So in essence, even if you're doing great, you're always 30 days behind. So there's that multiplier that you think about from a fraud perspective and if you think, you know, 500 bucks is a better amount, well, 500 bucks will multiply pretty quick. So it's a low amount, but it's pretty consistent with, with local governmental norms. Any of those amounts we're comfortable with, you know, from our perspective, an extra like $8, $9 a year is an awful lot and that number is really, you know, 5% a year. So we can, we can revisit it, we can prove that 50 bucks is too low or we can consider some alternatives.
I, I think it's too low, but I like it. But, Tom, how many sets of eyes look at one of these? I mean, we're not like Sheldon where, and I'm not saying anything derogatory about Sheldon where they only have a couple of people or maybe one person looking at it. We've got a lot of eyes looking at this stuff. Wouldn't you say it's kind of more than difficult to commit that type of fraud in this scenario that we have, that we, that we have here in the city hall?
Yes, but at the same time, you know, the orders were here last month and so, in a strange way, it left us a little more open because we're visiting with them so much that we fall a little bit behind. And, you know, again, if you look at the history of fraud, there's a lot of common factors, usually it's a personal problem, but folks can get creative. And the higher that amount goes, the more I've got to worry and think about it versus doing other productive things, helping the city manager and other things. And it takes away from your checklist, it adds a little bit to mine, maybe that's a little bit of a selfish answer. You know, again, I think of that 30-day multiple, where if you have 30 days to commit it, you know, an open session, I don't want to go over on the free, but I mean, people could potentially do.
I can find out on the internet.
Yeah, but, so I think, I think keeping it low for now is, is a good first step.
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm, this is fun. In fact, are we seeing it now? We're seeing some, but now, aren't we?
We're seeing some of the smaller ones. We took away some of the routine things, you know, creamer contracts and product parts, things like that.
Who am I, who was approving the meeting this time? Who else is approving it? You are? Yeah, aren't you seeing the difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's much, it's much less of the like $5 at ease for a hammer or whatever. Me, I'm, you, it's.
Credit 30 cents.
$5, yeah.
Tom, I'm impressed.
One screw, sorry. Should have been something else.
There's rundown of the, of the number of vouchers. When you get to the $50, it says 1,870, is that cumulative from zero to 50 or is that between 25 or?
That's cumulative.
Okay, so it's going to be about 1,800, maybe 2,000 about.
And that's an annual, annual number.
Oh, so that's not, okay.
You don't add, you don't add those all together, that's all combined, yes.
I mean, I personally don't mind doing that for inches to kind of give you a rundown on, you know, what's happening within the city. I've never, to me, if this seems like it's too much, maybe some people, if they don't want to do it, then they just don't do it. And we just, that's the way we, you know, we can have four people do it and then have four people do it. I mean, I, not that there's a whole lot of mistakes, but I always find two or three where it grabs the wrong, the software grabs the wrong number and, you know, it's never a law, but it's, you know, 10 or 15 bucks here or there, just, just needs to be corrected.
I don't need to, I don't need to inspect the city's operating budget or the city's receipts of, you know, Green Mountain Coffee.
Oh, no.
Or paper cups or paper towels, that, that don't concern me. What concerns me is that project or how much we're spending for the, for the engineer, that's the stuff I like to look at. I don't care if they're, how much paper someone's buying or how much, you know, coffee someone's buying or who's taking who to lunch, you know? So, I am worried about the tickets that we're reimbursing him for when he's out. That's okay. That's never over, is that over 50 bucks? That's never over 50 bucks, is it?
I'm about the same token. My father, all sharing it, rather than having with, in the past when we had a finance committee and you had the same aldermen, persons doing it.
I like a key, I mean, I gripe about it and I'm just kidding around when I'm doing it and it's, I know it's a responsibility of sitting here to do that and I think we should continue to do it that way. I don't think we should have one or two people do all of it all year long, I just don't think, yeah.
I just, you know, a couple of years ago, we talked about, it was $200 here for Christmas lights and $300 here, it was all said and done, it was like three grand. And I know, you picked up on it because I emailed you and I'm like, are you picking up on it too? And you're like, yeah, absolutely. So it's just, you know, not that it's a big deal, it's a whole scope of things, but it just gives you an idea of what's happening, especially if you're, you know, if you're a new city councillor.
But you could still. Let's assume that we go ahead with this and you have the 1878, you can still review it, right?
I still review it and it's still all unmarked.
And he can still review it if he wants to know.
Sure, anyone can go to any time and take a look.
Personally, I like it, it makes sense, I think, for $50 or less, I think, I think it's a great idea myself, but. So do you need a motion to move forward with that?
I'll make it.
Your second?
Second.
Any other questions for Tom?
I heard you say I'll make it already, you're here, Mark.
Tom, thanks for pulling this together. This really gives a good visual, but, so, motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Any other comments?
This is for $50 or less?
50 or less, right? So we're all on board with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, motion passes. Thank you, Tom. Next on the agenda is number six, Operations Report from Mr. Manahan.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening. Did you bring your, bring your spray paint?
Uh, it's out in the truck right now. I was hoping everybody's hands, I didn't have paint on their hands.
Lots of blue and white. Lots of blue and white. So, for those who may not have seen it, over the weekend?
Yeah.
Got hit pretty hard.
Yep.
Before we get out of your car.
About the movie theater, right there.
And over, over on Kingman Street too.
Behind here, there was some.
People's trust companies liked cameras, could pick that up?
I don't know, we haven't, they were closed today, so. I'm sure we'll get some of our cameras here and that's how we caught them the last time in the parking garage, we'll sue that, so. I'm sure we'll get some on our cameras here, and that's how we caught them the last time in the parking garage, was through that, so.
The State Office Building, do they have any that's right there on the outside?
Uh, I don't know if they have any on the back of that, I wouldn't be surprised if they did.
Marty, the parking garage.
The parking garage?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Before we jump into it, I can just share what your plan is for getting it cleaned up, yeah?
Uh, we will go out and try to remove it with our graffiti removal. Matt Moheren will probably take the lead on that, as he has in the past. And if we can't, if it doesn't come off of that, we'll go through and paint the areas, and keep track of what we spend and the time we put in, and then when they are eventually caught, they will either reimburse us. Typically, they'll go through court diversion, and they will contact us for either reimbursement or set them up with community service, where they'll have to go out and paint.
Some areas may not be ideal for painting, but I think over here, something would be ideal, but.
We, that, the stuff we have, the removal works pretty well, if you can get to it quickly enough. If it's there for a couple of weeks, it's going to be tougher to pop, so, yeah.
Is there some, some polls into this, is that what you're doing?
I don't know. Self-incrimination, I'd rather not answer that question. No, I would think the chief may, they take photos of all that stuff and everything, and we'll cross-reference it, so.
But historically, it's just been individualism.
Unfortunately, yeah, the last two times, it was kids from other communities that come down, and once they're caught, they're very remorseful and think about it, and can't understand why they did it, and, but typically don't repeat it, but it seems like we get new ones every couple of months, so.
This stuff looks a little more, uh.
Professional?
Yeah.
Right, it's too bad, I mean, you know, if they spent their efforts and our balls and stuff, they, they're talented, but.
So, uh, jump into free parking?
So two items, we had a request from the merchants to provide two hour free parking in the parking garage for a little while now, and we would like to try that out coming into the holiday months. And the way it would work, it's just a programming switch, a software programming. And we can turn it off anytime we desire, but the first two hours anybody parks in there is free. If they are in there longer than two hours, they'll be told what they owe, starting after that two hours. But if they leave during that two hours, the ticket allows them out of the garage.
Is this a request for the holidays, or is this?
I think it's probably permanent, it's an effort to try to get people to use the garage that are coming down, coming down shopping, as well as to try to get some of the employees of the establishments to use the garage and get used to it, and realize that it's a safe place and a convenient place.
First, any employees are going to be there longer than two hours?
Possibly.
And we're not expecting this to be, to hurt revenue a whole lot, because the two hours is pretty minimal.
Two hours, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just another effort to try to attract shoppers downtown during the holiday season, and get, again, people used to using the garage.
And will you promote that if it is approved?
Uh, we will put that on our social media, we'll probably do some things with the merchants to get them to spread the word amongst their customers as well.
How some, how some could come effect?
Uh, it's just calling ITS and having them program for us.
In some kind of ways.
Right, you put up additional sign and check the entrance, so.
Then we're gonna have at the bottom of the quiet here ride signs, we just put them up.
Yeah, there you go. If you have one of these sides on your yard.
Quiet here ride.
Quiet here ride, use the parking garage instead.
We, we've talked for ages about how to have a good parking program, you've got to have a system of incentives and disincentives, and if, if we want people to leave the spaces on Main Street open for short-term parking for the customers of the businesses in the downtown, we've got to get more of the cars off of Main Street. And if you, you give people a free chance to park in the garage, I think that's a way to, to retrain some behavior, and maybe open up a few of those spaces. And I know the merchants will be very, very happy, including a couple who live very close to me, so I'm very happy to hear about this, and excited to try it out.
One of the other pieces of this that the merchants have requested as well, and we aren't, I don't think ready to go there yet, but we're, we're gonna wait and see how this works, is raising the ticket price. Right now, it's fifteen dollars for a parking ticket on Main Street, so looking to raise that maybe to twenty or twenty-five is another disincentive to per the people that violate it on a daily basis, to encourage them to use.
Why would somebody who has the opportunity to park two hours on Main Street now remove themselves from that setting to go into the garage for two hours?
Well, there's different parking all over Main Street. There's thirty minute, there's
Two hour.
Two hour down Lake, and it's a good point, it's just a
Yeah.
incentive that they're trying to put out there to get.
If I were a business on Main Street, and I'm not, but I'm a business in the, in the downtown, and I have plenty of parking, I would, I would want to pay for my customers to park, to come and see me. It would be worth it for me to do that. And I don't know how sophisticated the software is, but we talked about it when we were talking, talking about downtown, to be able to validate, I do that when I go to Burlington.
We have that now, we have that ability now, so we have, like Twiets has purchased validation stickers.
Yeah.
When someone comes in there and dines, they bring their parking pass with them, their parking receipt, he puts a sticker on it when they go to leave, it's validated.
Yeah, I, I love that idea, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know we were doing it, I, I know they do it.
That's an option, that they, some have chosen to do that, others have not. Then we also have the validation of, of the parking ticket still. So if they have a customer that comes in and, say, eats at BMO's, and then goes to Artisan Residence and spends more than two hours there, and they get a ticket on their car, they can bring that ticket back into the BMO's or Artisan Residence, they put a sticker on it saying it's validated, gets mailed to the police department, they check, as long as they haven't had another one validated that year on their registration, it gets voided. So, that program is still in place.
Is that good for me, too? So someone, someone parks in front of my office and gets a ticket for being there too long, I can, I can say bring that into me, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We would, we would expect your billing would cover that ticket.
You know, I won't cover the ticket, but I would like to do something to get the people to be able to park there, and, and I think that's worth it, to me, anyway. It's worth it for someone to walk through my door and utilize my, my time and services, for what, a few bucks?
Yeah, those are the ones we are obviously wanting to enforce the parking on, it's the people that work there, that park in front of their neighbor's business, and
Yeah, I know.
Takes away that spot from their neighbor for the entire day.
So Marty, are you, you are looking for a motion?
Yes, support to.
Can you, can, when we do this, do we want to put a timeframe on this for, through the holidays, see how it goes, and then revisit it?
We can.
So if we need to, we can revisit.
Yeah, we, I can bring you back information on it, see how much of it's being used, and we can run some reports on that. When I say we, and you, Kristen can't.
I'll move that we have approved the plan to make two hours of free parking available in the garage, and maybe we'll check back in after the holidays and see if it's working.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Chad. Any other questions for Marty? Comments? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing now, motion passes. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you. Uh, second up is a consideration to approve a plan to transition out of our current winter parking ban to a more of an alert system, and have it in place only when we really need it. Right now, the way it works is the winter, winter parking ban goes into effect, I think it's December fifteenth, through the end of March. And if you are parked on the street during that time period, you'll get a warning the first time. And if you're parked there again, and the police come through and see it, and run the fact, and the warning's already been issued, you'll be issued a ticket. And then, if we're in the middle of a storm, and we're removing snow, you'll be towed. And you could be towed, the way our current ordinance is written, you could be towed on the night that it's not even snowing, and it's halfway east now. So what we would like to do is go to this, look, look at going to this beacon program, and what we would do is put one probably on North Main, South Main, Fairfield Street, Lake Street, and probably somewhere in the Kingman Street area. We'd be able to activate those, so if we're removing snow in the downtown that night, we activate, we put it out on social media. Um, and we've got some other programs that we can lure people on, and let them know that it's in effect, if you're parked on the street tonight, you will be towed.
What about in neighborhoods?
So that's where we would go with the social media, and hopefully, common sense would prevail, that if it's snowing out, and they see our trucks out plowing, that they will get the vehicles off the street. We had gone through, last year, we had some areas like Eisham Avenue, we had one car that were always parked on the side, they couldn't make it out there, they would park on the side, we couldn't get our truck through, for fear of running into the side of that car, so. We were always getting calls saying, hey, you haven't plowed Eisham yet, we, we need you to plow. We aren't going to risk damaging our equipment and their vehicle to try to get by, especially on a hill section like that. So I think we've got that to take care of, we put up signs on Eisham to prevent parking, on street parking there. I've had a conversation with a lady, and I've told her, if you can't get up to Eisham, you're better off parking on High Street. We'll plow around you on High, you're going to move it in the morning, we'll get back in there and clean up on High. But for the most part, they're really, the only time you really need it is when, when you're getting a lot of snow, and you're out there plowing. And Allen's, you know, his, when he was doing it, he never wanted to tow cars, and we don't want to tow cars. But at the end of the day, when you're on Main Street, and you're trying to clean up the Main Street block, and you've got a car parked in front of eighty-four Main, like we did last year several times, you end up plowing around that, and then that car moves, and then another car pulls in, and you can never get back to that spot, because other cars have filled in the other ones, and then you end up having frozen piles of snow there for a week, until you're able to get in there.
But, but you're saying neighborhoods, cars could park on Messenger or Rainier if it's not snowing?
Yeah, and as long as they're out of there within twenty-four hours, where we can get back through and plow, we're okay with that. But, and when this, when these lights are flashing, and even in the neighborhoods, that if they're parked, they've got to get their cars off the street in a driveway or the neighbor's driveway to.
It would have made sense.
But our, our concentration is going to be on getting downtown cleaned up.
And I know this may be overkill, but it makes sense to maybe put a couple of lights, say, on, on Fairfield, on Upper Walden, on Upper Dooton, where cars are going to keep coming up and down from the neighborhood, and they're going to see those lights, and they're going to know they need to.
Yeah, I mean, you could, we're, we're looking at a couple of different systems, this system that's in front of you now, it's just a beacon light with an antenna.
Right.
But we're trying to get it to the point where we don't have to have an antenna on everyone, that they'll be able to communicate between without having that. In the trouble with the neighborhoods, is when you start doing that, I think, and then the guy on Diamond Street says, well, yeah, I have one on Upper Walden, but I didn't see it from Diamond Street, I didn't, you know?
Yeah.
So it's a slippery slope, no pun intended.
So is the city sign, has the city registered for VT Alert? So that's a free service that we can register for, and that people can register for. And I get notifications all the time, all winter long, that the Burlington parking ban is, is in effect that night. And that's free, this is for us, this is for everybody, and it pops up as a text message on your phone.
I think we got red and colored red because of VT Alert, right? So we put on VT Alert.
Right.
And it just advertised people to, to register for VT Alert?
That makes sense.
So the other thing I would, I would add is there's been a lot of conversation on social media and everything about our, about our towing program. So, uh, we have several tow companies that are on the list. We rotate through the list of who, who we call, and it's next up on the list. And with this, we tow them to public works. So nobody is charged for storage, all they have to do is pay the sto, the towing bill, they go pay the towing bill at PD, they call us, we release the car out of public works. And it's about a hundred dollar tow bill. But they're not towed to Swan, they're not towed to Highgate, they're not charged for storage, because they couldn't get it over the weekend. If they call us, and we usually have somebody around, we can release the car, so. Uh, it went pretty well, we, we instituted that towing last year before winter, and we towed probably half of us of cars down there, and it seemed to work out pretty well, so.
Make a motion to approve the plan to transition from automatic winter parking ban to flashing sign and electronic notification.
Second, seconded by Jim, motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. Any other questions for Marty? Comments? Hearing now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes? Thank you, Marty.
Can I ask Marty about one unrelated thing? Real quick?
Okay.
Um, who, who might be responsible, or be able to, to help with cleaning up the brick wall that's been tagged for years, as you're heading into the Aldis Hill playground from?
Probably your mayor.
Governor Smith. You think we, you think maybe a couple of us could get up there and?
No, what, we've had it before, so I'm on the Aldis Hill board.
Okay.
Where is it?
The brick wall that you access up behind the, what was the Governor Smith in? So on that trail goes in, there's a wall, a stone, a brick wall. So we have, Aldis Hill has hired Matt Moheren and Charlie Sargent off-hours. And they get a pressure washer, and I didn't realize it got bad again. Uh, so they go up with a pressure washer, and they, as Marty alluded to earlier, they have the chemicals that they're, they put to it, so I will make a note to get with Matt and Charlie.
I knew if I just said something, one, one, fine, they would, would know what the.
I did, I did not realize it got bad again.
I did, how am I going to know from both sides?
Social media.
Actually, one of the tags says, eat, do.
Is it vulgar? No, doesn't matter.
Not, yeah, it's just.
Early on, years ago, it was bad.
Yeah, it's, there's nothing vulgar, it's just a mess up there, you know, it's, it's, it's not a great look. I think the traffic up there, it seems like more and more people are walking their dogs, taking a jog up there, it's really nice.
Cars park on the Governor Smith Drive, so.
So, and just for that, so Marty, are you saying that no one can park on Eisham Ave to access Aldis Hill now?
Oh, this is top.
Down lower, they could?
Well, we, we put those signs up there for anticipation of winter parking that took place last year.
Because I think on the.
If somebody parks up there, like today, on a beautiful day like today, parks up there and walks up in there, I don't think they're going to get a ticket. They're not going to get a ticket.
Because I think, I think Trail Hub, the, the app for, shows Eisham Ave as, Eisham Ave as an access point.
I think there is, isn't there an area at the very top?
No, it's pretty tight up there.
Is there the land to put a trailhead up there, to put parking up there? At the end of that, at the end of Eisham, who owns?
You would have to extend Eisham Ave into the woods.
Who owns the woods, Aldis Hill?
Aldis Hill.
I mean, it all struck me as that, we ought to build a trailhead up there, right?
There's a trailhead for pedestrian, but there's no parking.
Yeah, yeah, so we should build parking for it.
Right. Thank you, Marty. Moving on to the city manager's report, he's, he's thinking big today, so. So, um, local, local auction tax.
So there's metal in your, in your packet. There's, um, there's been a lot of dialogue across the state about this, as you know, I'm on the BLCT board. There's a sense among some local officials that this window might be closing, the ability to have a local auction tax, because so many communities are getting on the bus. Some of the transformative effects that we've realized through tax income and finance, and other communities have realized through enactment of a local auction tax. From a technical perspective, one percent is available, collected through the state, they take a processing fee, and then distributed seventy, thirty, seventy percent goes to the community, which is generated, thirty percent goes to other communities via the statewide payment of low taxes program. But what you see is, is, this is a pretty this is a pretty compelling list, I think, of other communities that are similarly situated to us. Berry City reported, according to the Tax Department, has adopted one, I haven't got their numbers. Just read in the Essex Reporter, that Essex Town and Essex Junction are lining up to get theirs adopted. Goes to the voters, the voters adopted in their charter. The where the real money seems to be is in the general sales tax. I'm told that, you know, people tend to think of it as a, as a retail tax, but what in effect happens is the big money generators are things like cable bills in town. And, um, we don't know what those are in St. Olm's city. But, for example, in St. Olm's town, Walmart is not, you know, not the majority player, it's less than half. The, uh, the, well, the big money is in the general sales tax, some other communities have levy one percent on rooms, meals, and alcohol. As far as I can tell, that As far as I can tell, that seems to be a package, whether you can parse it out further and just do one of those. We haven't researched that piece of it yet. The, um, last thing I would mention is this is collected at the wholesale level, um, so whereas right now ours is collected at the retail levels, so our, our, you know, de minimis alcohol tax, tax, which generates a fair bit of dialogue, people complain about it because it shows up in their bills. It doesn't generate a whole lot of money for us, I wanna say it's, um, the 10 grand range. Uh, yeah, I can't remember from the budget. So I, I think it's something that's worth looking into. The other data point is, forget it, my feeling that we should look into it is, I've been meeting with St. Olmans Town on a number of capital projects recently, um, and I realized in that conversation that their local option tax is generating so much, they're not using their debt to service debt, they're paying cash for what would typically be capital finance dollars.
Yeah, the notes.
That's it.
Um, quick question, um, cars is not applicable to cars, right?
That's right.
Right, is there anything else?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the accounts. I, I don't like them a lot of cars, but I hear the...
Cars have a purchase, they're part of the purchase and use tax, and they're taxed completely separately from the retail sales, it's a D and B tax.
Is there anything else that is not in that 1%?
Real estate, it's not in there.
I think there's probably a number of things that are, some things that are excluded and some things that are included, that we'd be surprised with that list.
And do I understand correctly that if you purchase something at Lowe's and it's delivered into the city, then that would be included in that?
My understanding is it's destination based.
Right, and if it's delivered, it's added on, if it's picked up?
Online sales?
You know, I haven't done a deep dive into it, Jim, but I think that's where the destination piece comes in, is for online sales, yeah.
I remember one of the town institutes there, we were getting calls from online retailers who wanted to make sure they had the right boundaries, so I have a hunch that we would get a piece of Amazon stuff too.
I understand, but I mean, we're talking Lowe's, which actually has a store in Vermont, but there's like, there's a lot of online retailers aren't even in Vermont, that's why I was asking, uh, there's distinguishing.
So a couple of years ago, there was a big, uh, national federal court case, um, the Wayfair decision, and now all the online retailers have to pay all the state and local sales taxes.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Didn't, I thought South Burlington turned down local option tax in favor, and they went towards rental car fees or something?
Two phases to it, the rental car one passed.
Yeah.
What was the other one that did not pass? It was...
Well, I, what I think Stan, think Stan, South Burlington is, uh, they proposed to amend their charter to, in addition to what you're seeing here, they were gonna add another one.
Right.
Just on the rental cars, and that passed the voters, but the legislature turned it down as a charter amendment. So, um, there's, there's a very clear path for 1% local option. South Burlington was trying to get out of that lane and do something, um, innovative, which responded to their local need, um, but the legislature stopped it.
So why do we need to do this? What's, what's it gonna do? Is it gonna lower property taxes? Is it going to, uh, get us something that we don't have now?
It diversifies our revenue sources. Right now, every time we come in for a project, the question is, what does it do to the tax rate, right? Cause that's our only revenue source. Um, and, you know, I don't, I don't know what the number is, I don't know, but theoretically, well, not theoretically, by definition, diversifying our revenue streams reduces prop pressure on the property tax, it reduces pressure on the stormwater, um, fee that's embedded within water and wastewater bills, uh, and, uh, you know, there's a couple of capital projects that are in the offering that it could be targeted towards, um, or it, uh...
I think one discussion we had at one point was addressing the, a lot of the downtown amenities, the flowers, the banners, um...
Man, this, you can do whatever you want with it, you know, but, um, I'd encourage us not to be, to embed the uses within the charter, cause then the legislature is in charge, put counsel to adopt the policy about how, uh, but I, you know, I think, I think all of that is a conversation yet to come, you know, and I don't think we have enough information.
Yeah, we don't need a lot of information.
So I, I would, I'd make a motion to authorize, to research it, um, the local option tax, but, uh, we're a long ways away from considering adopting anything.
I second that.
And can this, would you include Jeff Carr? You, you want Jeff Carr to do the analysis, right?
Yeah, I mean, his, his firm has the expertise in it, and, you know, has done a number of them, you know? I'm not waiting to do it. If you guys think that this is not something you want any part of, we got a lot better things to do with our time, so, that's why.
And in the end, taxpayers will run it anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's why, you know...
But we have a, we have an obligation to give them a fair opportunity to assess whether or not this is a good move for the city or not.
No, I agree, I agree.
And by doing that, we should authorize the research that we need to have.
I think we have to do our due diligence, not the research, yes.
No, I agree with that.
So, Tim, can you restate your motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize, to, uh, authorize the staff to research the, um, local option tax.
I'll second that. As an amended, amendment to the original motions, I would just...
No, it's the original motion.
Yeah, yeah, that is the original motion.
We will leave, uh, with the understanding we'll leave that research up to the discussion of the city manager, on how we go to that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for city manager?
Are we gonna, is that discussion, you're, you're asking for a discussion right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anyone, any comments, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing Donald to move forward with some homework, um, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Donald. Congressman Maine?
Congressman Maine, uh, Marty, please augment it as needed, uh, we had a couple of slowdowns, uh, related to underground utilities, uh, we had heck of a time getting, um, Comcast and Vermont Gas, uh, and, uh, whatever now that is.
Moonpower.
Consolidated.
Consolidated, yeah, thank you. I thought about Hurricane Cass. Uh, and then, in addition to that, um, we're waiting on a sticker for our Dirty Dirt Hauler to get from State of New York to heat on New York's roads. So all kinds of just, you know, um, minutia, ridiculous, closing things to slow down for a week's time, and we're back on track. Um, we've been working like a dick until the last couple of days, uh, strategy is to get, um, reuse all of the Dirty Dirt on site, uh, so that anything that has to go offsite as clean as possible, we're trying to get it to be back. We continue to be pushing hard to have the podium, which is on the back of the site, that supports the two residential buildings. Um, we're still trying to get that up, um, by mid-December, so that the residential projects can start. Excuse me, before that, um, we expect to see steel going up on the commercial building on, on the front of the site. We're prepping for closing those guys the end of the month, that's why the declaration is before you is the next action. Uh, so, good, good, we're on the, um, and, uh, we're past the delays, I think.
You would have done?
No, I think that sums it up. Our biggest piece was, uh, getting an easement from Consolidated to bring the gas in from Bank as opposed to the original design to come in off Congress, and we were gonna bury the line there, but Vermont Gas said they didn't want it any deeper than three feet, so what we would have had to do is, uh, three quarters of the way through the project, bring it back up. We would have buried it three feet where it is now, but the final grade is gonna be about six feet higher than that, so we would have had to replace it again. So it was worth waiting for Consolidated to give us the easement to, but it took, uh, about three weeks to get that done, so.
Using Consolidated because of the building on the corner.
Right, it was their way, and then we were crossing over.
So once buildings, once the building starts going up, it's gonna start, it's gonna go pretty, a lot quicker pace.
Yeah, and the, the slowest and the hardest part is the sidewalk. And we're, you know, frankly, we intend to get out of it, uh, a lot of space by the end of the calendar year.
Did have a constituent telling me that she was gonna fall down in the pit and break her leg, and then there was gonna have to be a pit beautification committee and that she was gonna chair. So if anyone watches Parks and Rats.
Parks and Rats, right.
So, okay, thank you.
The next item grows, uh, right at, right out of that, um, uh, we are declaring a condominium as part of the project. What I've directed your attention to is this cycling, uh, it's a little hard to read, um, up under the condominium notes. We are Unit 1, which includes all land within the project, uh, and includes a grant of easement to Units 2, 3, and 4 to install and maintain foundation elements and underground utilities. Unit 2 is the commercial building on the front of the site, and they benefit for the easement for parking and access to main, uh, access, Unit 1 for parking and access and maintenance from Congress Street, and also, uh, easement to install and maintain foundation elements and underground utilities. Very similar language on Units 3 and 4, which are the two housing units. There's been tremendous conversation and coordination around, uh, let's call it the podium, uh, which is the foundation that the two residential buildings sit on. Um, we are building that, we're not gonna own it, they're paying us for it, um, but the state, um, fire marshal and building inspector had a hard time wrapping his head around that whole thing, uh, and wanting to make sure that, you know, how, who owns, who owns what, where do the sprinklers run, how do you, do you have rights to fix the sprinkler, uh, if you need to go onto somebody else's property? Uh, and, uh, what are common elements? Is the sprinkler a common element, or is that, uh, separate? We've gone to great lengths to try and maintain everything as separate as possible and minimize the common elements, have that be kind of a last resort. Uh, that's why we own all the land, and the rest of them just have building rights. Yeah, there's a whole bunch of detailing, um, if we can do a deeper dive, uh, as interested, the resolution resolves if the council approved the execution document, uh, in the filing and according by the city manager of the master condominium, uh, for interest in the declaration. We envision, um, over the next week or so, there's gonna be changes that we have to true up, for instance, um, as late as this afternoon, there's a discussion about, um, where the line of demarcation is between Unit 1 and Units 3 and 4, whether it includes the vertical walls, uh, or whether it kicks in at the ceiling level. Some of that will be influenced by what the state permit, uh, state regulator signs off on, and so, um, this resolution contemplating that the city manager, um, would authorize to make those true ups to make sure everything's consistent, uh, but not have to come back to the council again, so that we're able to close at the end of October. Uh, the third and final document is, uh, all the language, uh, which implements it, uh, creates the association and the common interest community under Vermont laws to regular condominiums.
You're expecting us to vote on this tonight?
Well, I'm asking you to consider voting on it tonight, the alternative is...
The reason I'm asking is we didn't see this until today. It's forty-some odd pages long. I was working, I couldn't make copies out of work of this thing. The copy I have here tonight shows two-thirds of the page, not the other third, and I just think, why, why do, I'm asking that we table the vote until we have a chance to read this document. I don't care if we do a special meeting or just a, I don't care, I just, I'm not prepared to go yes on this yet.
Tim, did you read this?
Yep.
Are you good?
I'm familiar with them, I've done them, yeah.
You're good?
Yes, this is a new adventure for the city, um, this type of regime within the city, where the city's still gonna have ownership of something, but I think it's, yeah, there's nothing, and the firm that prepared it are, know how to do these too, so, yeah. I don't see a problem with it.
Anyone else express Jim's concerns?
I mean, I expressed a concern, but, I mean, I'm, I'm not a real estate lawyer, so I read two-thirds of it goes, it seems like cookie kind of language to me, so...
All this, all these declarations do is they give all the condominium owners a fair opportunity to see what it is they're getting, what type of responsibilities they have, and how, how the organization is gonna be handled. That's, that's what, that's what this document is. So, as far as operation for the city, it, it doesn't mean as much as it does for the, uh, for the people that are gonna actually be there, so.
And it can be amended.
Yeah, it can be amended any, yeah. And everyone, and usually these documents are protections, so that someone in, in a condominium association doesn't do something that is so out of the norm that it, uh, it decreases the value of the other condominiums that are there, or, or interferes with their enjoyment of the condominium. And I don't think that would ever be the case here, not with the classic tenants that are gonna be there. They're not gonna let anything happen that's gonna destroy what they, what they're putting money into. So if something goes wrong, the dumpster issue, uh, everyone will be, I'm sure everyone would happily amend it too, so that it looks presentable and right and correct.
We've got 50% of the shares, so, um, I mean, you know, Jim, I apologize for not getting to your, my analysis otherwise. Notwithstanding Tim, none of us are real estate lawyers. So we hired a...
I have been, but, uh, because of that, I like to read the documents before I have gone on them, and, uh, so, you know, I understand everything Tim's saying, I agree with it, but I'd like to be, have the time or chance to read it, and that's, I guess maybe because I am a lawyer, that's why I'm being such a pain in the ass about that, about, you know...
I thought it's just sort of breathing life into what we've been talking about for months.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, you know, that's, that's just my opinion, somebody can make a motion.
Anyone can make a motion?
I'm just, well, just, just thinking out loud before we make your motion, would there, would there be any, uh, problem if we, uh, made a motion, um, to accept the declaration? Um, and, uh, if Jim has any concerns over the next, uh, what, 24 hours or 48 hours to bring them to our attention, and we'll, we'll repair him at that point in time, or we'll address that at that point in time? So he does get a chance to read it?
I am fine with that.
But I don't think he'll have a problem with it.
Do that, I mean, or we just vote, it looks like it's gonna be six to one anyway.
Well, no, I don't, it, it doesn't matter if it was 50 to one, if you haven't had a chance to read the document, I, I would want you to...
Doesn't matter, I mean, you know, I can say that, I mean, you know, but...
But I think, I think what Tim's saying, Jim, is it gives you an opportunity to add something to it if need, if you feel it needed to.
I hear you, and, and I don't wanna hold you up, that's what I'm saying, if it's something that you wanna move forward, then do the vote, but...
My question to you would be, would 48 hours be enough for you to review it?
Probably.
Okay, so...
If I get a better copy, obviously.
But Tim, I would encourage you to place that motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the condominium declaration for Congress and Main Street redevelopment that's outlined in the resolution, subject to a 48-hour review, for, uh, Jim to take a look at it, to bring any objections forward.
Should it look like that?
Um, is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad. Uh, Dominic, that doesn't mess you up?
No.
And it gives us time to react if Jim finds anything?
He just got two days.
Yeah, no, we're good.
Okay, so, uh, any, any other questions on the motion or comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, Jim will... Motion passes, Jim will review and get back, shoot an email to Dom or to all of us stating that you are good or not.
Can do that, I can do a, I can shoot it to everybody.
Thank you for that, Jim.
Thank, thank you for the consideration, appreciate it.
Uh, Tim, just a second.
I did, um, two things, I wanna, when we talked about Congress and Main, and we just passed over, I know, but. Can you give a timeline, that's a question I get a lot, is what's going on? Can you sort of lay it out in big pictures, is the concrete's gonna be poured in a month, time, you know, give or take?
So by the end of the calendar year, you'll see. First thing that's gonna happen is the commercial building on Main Street. Steel's gonna start going up on that mid-November. Shortly thereafter, the back of the site's gonna get started with the concrete and steel for the podium. The, both buildings have a twelve-month construction schedule. So sometime between the fall of two thousand twenty and the end of two thousand twenty, both buildings will be finished. There's some coordination with CCV about when they're gonna move, and aligning that with the academic calendar. So that probably lines up more like in January. But that building would likely be done within twenty twenty and not into twenty twenty-one. And then, once CCV is adequate, we start the renovations on the public safety building. And that's at least a six-month process. But, you know, the, if people, yeah, I think a lot of folks are really concerned that we're gonna be the next Burlington with a new cellar hole. They wanna know, when do they?
Or Newport. They're not seeing any progress right now, so they're getting a little worried.
Yeah. Were they out there this weekend?
Yes, they were.
Yeah, they were, the last two days. So I think between now and the end of the calendar year, people's fears should subside. I mean, literally, we were dealing with that minutia, and now we're rocking and rolling.
It was funny because when we had the building on Main, their little construction building on Main Street, everyone's complaints on Main Street, as soon as it was gone, oh my God, now we're gonna have another hole with no one. So it was kinda interesting.
It, it doesn't help that two other municipalities in Vermont have.
Holes.
Big holes in there.
I mean, the big difference there, so we've been traveling around the state telling our story, the big difference is we own all the land. So we're in the driver's seat in a way that none of the others two are. And that's a big, you know, that was a good move on our part. And the council's plan is to take that risk for Texas.
Makes sense.
If the truth be known, once it went idle, the mayor demanded that things pick up. I'm gonna get into my report. Before I do that, I, I probably should have done that at the beginning, but over the last month, we've lost some great St. Albans city citizens, starting with Mark Reynolds, who was lifelong, lived on Lake Street. Jim Brulet, who was active in the Legion and for many, many years. And then, I guess, for all the people who grew up here, Claudette Voswick as well, French teacher. And I would, if there's anyone else that you wanna add to that, but I'd like to take a moment of silence for all of them. You know, I think they were all part of the fabric of St. Albans and, you know, they're all, I, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say they're all, many, most of them were good friends about to all of us, so if we can take a moment to, for them. Thank you. My list is a little lengthy, so I'll go last. Chad's usually pretty short, so I'll go with Chad first.
Are we doing other, do you wanna?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we can do that. So with Claudette's passing, there was a vacancy on the Collins Pearly Board that Claudette was the city representative, and they were looking to fill that. We did have a nomination with Jessie Remler, who lives on Rainy Street, is active in youth football with her kids and lacrosse, works at Immigration. I think most of us know her or have had experience with.
What a great choice.
And I think she will do a great job, so I've spoken to her, she is on board with everything that the job entails. So I would entertain a motion to nominate Jessie Remler to the Collins Pearly Board.
Moved.
Motion by Tim, is there a second?
I'll second, I respect Tim's opinions, okay.
Second by Jim?
Both Tims, I respect both their opinions.
All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition?
I just, I just, before I go yay, I just wanna make sure, I do serve on the board with Jessie, so as long as there's no issues, okay. It is a non-hain.
You're okay.
But knowing that, you're still voting yes?
Oh, yeah.
If you got reservations.
Marty's the most informed person there. Okay, so all the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. I think, did this get nine votes?
Didn't make it, Kristen was sick, we weren't our top four game on Friday.
I attended the Vermont League of Cities of Town, Town Fair last week, and Whiteenburg had a, had a booth there. And one of the pieces that they're handing out, probably the city would be hard pressed to come up with a better piece to promote St. Albans and what we've done. I'll pass this around, but on the front, when it talks about downtown revitalization, has a hotel and the state office building. And then the backside talks all about St. Albans and I know aerial view of the parking garage and the hotel. So I guess I was interesting. You know, I think that's great publicity for what, what has happened here over the years. So, that's about all I have, so Chad, we'll come back to you, do you wanna start?
Again, just wanna thank Public Works folks, I know they've been out late, you know, out. I was a little disappointed about the paving, but that's not the, it's not Public Works, but. Yeah, Marty assured me that at worst case, they would go with their plows raised down South Towne, so I felt better about that. Marty did raise the art wall earlier, we had talked about having one at Holton Park earlier, and was kinda hoping that would happen before fall, and it hasn't happened. So I just don't know what the, what the whole of it, I've got all the approvals and.
Was the parks commission gonna weigh in on that, Chip?
They already have. Last, we were looking for the design, we just, see if we can get the material materials for the, we didn't.
And then, do we know what's up with, have we made any progress with the sensor at the top of Newman, those lights?
He, I know the last time I interviewed him, he ordered some parts for that.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I'll have to check and see if he has fixers, replaced them or.
Okay, they weren't working the other day, I just hope, I know parts are probably hard to come by too, so.
You mean on Upper Newman?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, what I found is that if you pull, if you pull all the way forward on Upper Newman, it doesn't send you. But if you pull back a bit, it does, so they're working, it's just a matter of where they're aimed, I think.
Okay, 'cause coming up on Lower Newman, it doesn't send you at all. So it'll cycle, even though there's no one there, the Main Street lights will go red.
I think that's what he was, yeah.
And just, it'll just sit there, okay. And then, the only other thing is, did we, did somebody give us a house on Maple Street? The corner, I must say it was Maple, then.
LaSalle?
LaSalle.
Yeah.
They give it to us.
We gotta create. Yeah. Is there any way that we can get a list of all the properties that the city owns? 'Cause I, I think it's pretty numerous at this point.
Probably give it to you right now.
Okay.
Right, so we got that one.
Yeah.
Mason.
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 Seven.
Ninety-nine high.
And there's really four.
Federal.
So Federal Street.
Yeah.
LaSalle.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine high and Mason.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Yeah, so Public Works Garage, Laurel Street School.
I was just wondering about like, any residential area. So do we have any plans for that one down by Marie, is there any, 'cause it has a house on it, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I think the council goals and objectives paraphrasing here says, move those properties, right?
Do something about it.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we've been doing, so. So we've been using, so we learned from the Diamond Street experience when we used the tech center that there needs to be somebody working for us overseeing their work, just not like a clerk of the works type of thing.
Yeah.
So Jim Cameron's doing that, we're still using the tech center wherever possible. But Jim's directives were get Federal Street and one other one.
Well, LaSalle is scheduled to be demolished.
Yeah.
We've gone in and done the testing for that and asbestos, mediated that, that's gonna probably be demolished by the end of the year.
Is that the one across from Miami parking lot?
Yeah. That was diagonally across, there's a, right across from.
Colony Square.
Colony Square, yes.
Is that Little Ron Toys place?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So we're working with the school, and the, and the Jim's directive was focusing on Mason and Federal Street getting to the market by the spring.
Okay.
And we're on track with that, with Federal Street. I think Mason Street has slowed down a little bit because of the academic participation.
Yeah.
And ninety-nine high, we've.
I see that little.
Yeah.
And we get calls, I've got a couple of people right now interested in Mason Street that if we wanted to sell, with a condition on what the house was that was built there.
Yeah.
I think we could move pretty quickly on that if we wanted to. And we just sold artist residence, so.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
What was your point?
Huh?
What was your point, we're buying too much?
No, I was just wondering what's up with all these properties, what was up with that?
Well, remember, when we take those over, we can put conditions on the property that will always be there forever and ever. You know, and it is usually better than what it was before we took it over. And I think that was the impetus, why we all agreed that we're gonna take some of these properties over so that we could condition them so that there'll be the appropriate residence or the appropriate lot for the area.
No, I totally agree. I mean, if, if the one on, the one down by Marie, I wanna call it Maple Street, doesn't, doesn't sell, I mean, that's, that's for Little Park or something. It's a, or Little Dog Park or something, it's a great location.
Yeah, I agree.
Right there, across from Colonial's, which is for sale. And all the kids in that neighborhood would be a great little area for a little park, okay? Just a thought. Marie?
I just had a comment on how nice the flowers all around the city look when they put the dark mulch down and then they put all the mums, it's, it's absolutely beautiful. You take like a weekend like we just had, the, the sun shining bright, all the color, it, the, the city just looks gorgeous. Very nice job there, yeah.
James?
I'm gonna have to, first, I'll, I'll go in increments. First of all, this was great, I loved it, until I read on the back, Whiteenburg worked on behalf of the town of St. Albans. Establish a tax and community financing district. Did we tell Whiteenburg to relearn the season?
They hired in a, that's interesting, that, you know, the. What's most interesting to me in that is the places they've opened up an office. So it's Ashwell, and what's the other one?
Manchester, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and what is. So, you know, they're, they're beginning to have a, you know, certainly a large regional presence of what people are most interested in as they're opening these offices, is these big public-private partnerships that are attracting investment to the places that otherwise wouldn't be there.
Right, right, that was, that was my heart, but still, I mean.
So they hired a director of business, and she's been on about six months. She's doing an incredible job, but she just, you know, will get that fixed.
I have had more than one resident of, of the city, including one very part constituent that happens to live in the house I live in, that want to see the sign back at the top of Kingman Street for the no left turn. The one that we used to go to park, the big one that people can see, because they're not seeing it. And she almost got wiped out one day with somebody turning left there, and she's, she drives a lot more, I do, and there's a lot of people that are turning left. Now she's retired, she has all this time to look at all this stuff, you know, but, so, that, that's a request.
Maybe she should run for that one.
Maybe she's a, she can shoot out, if you would be kind enough to take one pass for now. Now I'm gonna be, now with, with Marie's discussion of how beautiful Flowering was.
But look how pretty it is, Jim.
Yeah, we can keep passing the Kingman Center. I have a picture of the hotel here too, but, I took this picture when I was at the end of the courthouse driveway. My car, the nose of my car was right at the travel portion of the road, trying to look down Main Street to see what was coming. You can't do it in a car. I don't have a truck, I don't have an SUV, I have a sedan. Those flower pots are too high, they block the view, they need to be moved. I, before I could see down Main Street, I had the nose of my car well into that, into that lane. That's an accident waiting to happen. This is the only place that I'm aware of, where there's, where the bump outs affect the driveway, they're out of, out, public driveway.
Do you think the two yellow ones?
There's a parking lot there.
Removing the two yellow ones and the one in front would have helped, would have.
I don't know, maybe moving the three in the front, yeah, maybe that would help. Or smaller pots, or planted in the ground like a lot of other ones around, I don't know. But that's not good, that's not a good safety thing.
Well, other than the corners, or down the road.
We've, we've just, we, we've been listening to you and have moved it back gradually to try to.
I don't understand, but I mean, a picture tells a thousand, better than a thousand words.
Doesn't look like anything but an upgrade planting will suffice, so.
That one, yeah.
We will remove all pots.
Okay.
Maybe with the shorter mums or something.
Or, or shorter pots, or, I mean, that would work too, smaller pots, but, okay, that's it. Now that I've totally defused Marie, how beautiful Marie Flowering was.
I'm getting a photo with the PD, I think Jim's taking photos of the driver's seat of the car.
They do look pretty, Marie, they shouldn't be there.
They're beautiful.
Anything else, James?
That's it.
Good, thank you. Kate?
I have been noticing many more houses decorated with Halloween stuff this year. And I know that the Wanda Park runs their holiday decorating contest, and I'm starting to see, it feels like more and more people are doing this. I think it's a reflection of what's happening in the downtown kind of starting to translate out, and I just think it's really cool.
Do they have a contest for Halloween, that great, and Christmas, both, yeah?
And Memorial Day and Fourth of July, Fourth of July.
That is very cool.
I favor, you heard about the one that was on our target list for health and safety? You know, was getting the letters about, you really need to clean this place up, and they took the theme and they totally designated it as unsafe and do not enter, and blocked it all off and everything, you know? And, and they won.
You're serious? Oh, no, that's funny.
You can have a selfie here.
Yeah, totally.
Mike?
Stephanie reports that traffic has calmed down significantly, I don't know if that's about the weather or the Quiet Your Ride campaign, but things are a little safer on the corner of Bank and Smith, apparently. I wanted, the one thing I wanted to mention was that there's this article that caught my eye about a week ago in Vermont Digger, where they're talking about the changes in population in different Vermont. in different Vermont municipalities. And I wanted Dominic and anybody else who is interested in this to, to maybe consider if we're a little under-sampled in the census because it's difficult to access for the folks who are doing the door-to-door counts, um, a lot of our apartment dwellings in the city. And I'm wondering if we, if there's anything that we can do as a municipality to make sure that we're making it as easy as possible for the census workers to access some of those. If we can talk to landlords about when that stuff's gonna be happening, if we can, because that is gonna drive our representation in the legislature. And I cannot believe the numbers that I'm seeing in the census data. It just doesn't make any sense to me that we're, that we've lost. Yeah, I think that we're a little under-sampled. And, and seriously, a couple hundred people could make a huge difference. So that was just something, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I wanted to flag it because it covered.
Campaign, we could offer, um, come out, uh, come out and be candid.
We can partner heavily with the census operations once they get ramped up. And with the online census, this is where we can also do our part to make sure everybody knows that you can do it online.
Water sewer bills?
Yeah. Water sewer bill.
It makes a huge difference.
That's right. The water sewer, if you're looking for apartment buildings, might not be useful just because they may, they may not be peered in privately. So landlords get, I mean, we get the bill.
And then in 2030, after the mainland apartments are finally counted a decade late, because they're just really gonna miss April 2020. Our numbers will be, will be even better. We could just bust them.
Yeah, I, I did not, did not mean to be promoting an inaccurate census count, but just wanted to make sure that we're not under-sampled, given that it's, uh, we're, we're, we're the only, we're the only urban, you know, semi-urban, uh, place where we have the kinds of apartments that are hard to access. Yeah.
And there's a bunch of people in there.
A bunch, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I worked with the census in my previous job pretty closely. There's a point in their, um, there's a point in the operation where they start, where they'll, they'll start opening, there'll, there'll probably be an office in Chippewa County. We'll know who the people are. Someone's gonna come talk to us. So we'll do everything we can to partner with the effort to make sure that the work, the census workers are going where they should go, but also that, uh, that all the residents in state offices know that they should participate and have a participation.
Mike, I forgot.
Uh, two things. Are you gonna talk about that from today?
I did not have that on my list. No, there.
So there's gonna be the regular function. And, uh, once again, I just hope the, uh, the band's gonna be there. And I hope that the, we have the proper policing and the, the proper streets blocked off. We didn't last year. Okay? And we did Memorial Day this year. So I, I just, you know, I just think that there should be no cars from Kingman Street down to Fairfield Street. No cars, nothing going down there at all while those kids are on the road like that. Which one, one of us might.
So no cars, so you're widening out?
Yeah, widened out and that, and that way the spectators can be out there too. And, uh, the, uh, the, the cars can go up, um, uh, Bank Street and over Church Street until the band gets in front of the, uh, the park. And then the band, the band goes up that way. Uh, and then they go down Church Street and then into the park. So I think for that small amount of time, uh, they can be redirected down Kingman Street, main street cars down Kingman Street and, uh, Fairfield Street, uh, over towards South Main and Lake Street blocked off until the bands can block.
Couldn't that the same blockage for Maple Fest?
Pretty much. But just right in the past, they, the band comes through and cars kinda try to avoid them. Cars are able to travel south while the bands walk, travel north.
Do we know the? Where they're coming from too?
Uh, they can, they can go, the band's coming from BFA. And they're, they're coming north up Main Street.
To the park, yeah.
And the cars are still able to.
Going south.
Go south right by them. And there's, there's spectators out, you know, in the, in the, in that lane trying to look at the band. The cars are coming down and they're interfering with the kids.
I agree. They're not gonna be, there's not gonna take them down long enough for BFA to depart. They can wait, but, you know.
Um, and, uh, and also same thing, uh, I hope the sound system's a little bit better too. You, you speak loudly into the mic, but the, some people don't and you, you know, it's.
Well, it's typically them. It's typically the Legion.
Yeah.
That brings in the sound.
Okay, I thought it was ours.
I think we, I, what I learned was Legion, because I did have, I did have a conversation with, uh, Billy Robinson. VFW's in charge of the Veterans Day and Legion's in charge of Memorial Day. Um, and so I did reach out to Billy. Tim and I basically talked about this after Memorial Day, about trying to jazz it up a little bit and, and, um, uh, see what we can do to, to make it more of an event.
Yeah.
And, um, I know General Knight at National Guard in Burlington, Zach over at the Armory, uh, both have committed to making this a better event. Marty also had a great suggestion, which we won't have our act together, but, um, where we could, uh, do some banners on Main Street with, uh, veterans on them.
I gave that information to Bill.
So people, people would pay a hundred dollars, put their picture of their grandfather, father, son on it. You run it a month before Memorial Day, a month before Veterans Day, and then they get the banner to keep after.
I remember Pete Deloria too, when he was USA, down at the city, I had all the USA kids up here, um, that division of the city school up here, and that made it look like a lot.
Yeah, they put it at Old School.
Oh, did they? Yeah, and I, I'm just saying they do that again. If the weather's good.
I think John Coffey has taken that on. I'll, I'll speak with him, but I think he's.
It's just coming. It's November 10th, so. Uh, the other thing is, um, I, I was gone a couple of days. I didn't get a chance to look at The Messenger every day, but I did see an article in The Messenger by Carolyn Brannigan regarding the TIF and wanted to know if anyone responded to that. Because she, she didn't lay it out the right, the proper way.
First note.
Um, and it just was bad. And I almost called her up myself, uh, but I didn't. Uh, I was just said, well, Dominic will probably respond to the paper. I kind of forgot about it. I took a couple of days off, went out of state and never checked to see if.
It's a simple response.
Yeah.
Because without what's going on now, they don't get the 25%.
You're right. And that's what she, that's definitely what she left out in that article.
And I had a conversation with her and I know many others have as well, but there's a disconnect that are somewhere where she doesn't understand that.
She made it sound like they get all the money, but not just the increment that's increased.
That's right. That's right. And they're, they're not losing anything.
Right.
No.
They're not losing anything.
They're getting 25% more than they were.
People don't understand.
We are knowing the education grant list with our group.
She understands.
I just, I just wish that if there's someone who's looking at the paper, could respond to that kind of stuff. I mean.
Are they also supporting the?
We keep pretty close.
They're supporting the auditor, is that what she's?
No.
Yeah, she, she, she's a smart lady too. She's, she's no dummy. And she just laid that out the wrong way and I, and I just couldn't believe it.
I think people are taking sides between us and the auditor, to be honest with you. And I think it's, it's games with chip. I think we should ignore it eventually. It's just gonna go away.
Yeah, but this is an argument she's had since day one on the TIF.
But people aren't understanding. The next four people you talk to are saying, hey, what's going on with the TIF? And I said, look, that's not the way it goes. This is, this is how it is. And, you know, and I think that people are now looking at it saying, oh, that's what's, why am I voting for the TIF? You know? I know we're getting down to the endgame with it, but we count on that support from those people.
At least it certainly depends on my reply. I've been trying to lower my blood pressure lately and take a little distance from the TIF. And, um, because as soon as I replied, it, Hoffers, like, it, it just felt like it was this, you know? And Carolyn had her yank about it. She's had it for years. And, but I'm certainly glad to reply.
But she completely understated it.
We're gonna, we're gonna raise some money for the city. We're gonna put boxing ring down. I would term you a hoffer going out of it.
I can talk about that.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, quickly online, um, for those who haven't listened to the new radio station. Every morning, 1420. It's great to have a local radio station back in this community.
Absolutely.
I went to a football game, left early, put on 1420 and the football game was on. Um, I mean, I think that's.
Where are they broadcasting out of, Tim?
I heard Edward Street.
Edward Street, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. That's what I heard.
I see their car down further, Huntington or something like that. And I thought they had the towers over on Mason.
Tower is down, uh, lower.
Yeah, lower. But it's great to have it. We need to get the word out, try to use that more for a comment or sound off or what it used to be. I think, um, I think it's great to have it.
Maybe they can do some kind of a thing like that, like a comment or sound off.
Do a show about the TIF.
With Carolyn at the G. Uh, Dom and I had a, I thought was an excellent meeting up at St. Mary's to talk about potential parking. Uh, we're moving that forward for, uh, for the high school, utilize that in some form or fashion. So there's, I thought Monsignor Ruth here was open to the discussion. So I think we made some good headway there.
Yeah.
On October 29th, the Senate Housing and Economic Development Committee is here in City Hall to talk housing, if anyone's interested in attending. I think, are you gonna try to make that, Dom?
Yeah.
What time is that? Um, that is, uh, right now, it's a 10:00 at a time. I think it's 10:00 to 11:30, or 10:30 to noon, maybe 10:30 to noon. Um, there's also a workforce summit, uh, at the museum on October 22nd. Employers in the morning and partners in the afternoon to talk about what might happen relative to, um, finding workforce to fill jobs. Marty and I talked about, uh, it appears there's a lot of street signs missing and have, continue to be missing. Uh, this came to light in the industrial park. Someone stole the metal Ben &amp; Jerry's directional sign. I don't know if they stole it for the sake because it was a Ben &amp; Jerry's sign or they stole it because it was aluminum. So, um, Marty, you, you have an estimate on the number of signs you had come up missing?
Right. We've got, we ordered some for the Hill section because there hasn't been, there's not a high street, basically. And then Messenger, we ordered probably a dozen, but we are missing about probably 90.
Oh, wow.
Throughout the city, just going straight. We had a best one on Thorpe Avenue. A week later, it was gone.
What's going on?
See, I don't know if they're stealing signs for signs or signs for metal. That's, that would be my question.
So we, we ordered another one for Thorpe. We'll put that up and it's saved for.
Probably going down to college dorm rooms.
Is Lexian, is just Lexian not, I mean, Lexian is worthless. A lot of pieces that big. I wonder if.
You count a set of rules that's gonna be a certain size.
Size, yeah.
And you, GCD, rights.
Thank you to Marty and Public Works. Um, had to rerun some wires in the park to get lights on the south end of the park that have been off for a number of years, well, two years anyways, I think, almost. Uh, basically, they found that G Fremont Power, um, switched poles, right? And then re, never reconnected what we had connected to the pole. I think that's what the outcome was, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, they found that. I don't know when they're gonna attach the meter.
This week, they should be. He's gonna run.
So I think that'll be a nice addition to have the lights added to the park. Had another call regarding the passport building parking and, um, so I don't know. That's something Chad, his committee wants to look at, but, um, one suggestion was.
What do they wanna do with it?
Well, they're short for a key time. People coming to, to use a passport center can't find parking because some of the high school kids use it and then they come out and switch every two hours. Can it be, a couple suggestions, can it be designated two or three spots for a passport? Or can it be a few meters put there to sort of keep people rotating in and out? Those were what I had heard from.
Tim's takes, Tim's takes a lot of that stuff too. A lot of that part, like, a lot of times, especially depending on the time of the day. Because his parking lot gets full up there and they're parking up there.
Yeah, he does, very little parking up there.
Yeah. He's a successful restaurant, so.
Of course, when he went, his, during his busiest time, the pizza time, they're full, so. But I would think in the mornings, probably they're, they're big issues. That when they inter, intersect with the, with the, uh, passport office.
The last piece I had was we've been asked to, uh, to do a Human Rights Day proclamation. Uh, so we will add that to your packet next time around. Take a look at it, see what people saw there. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. I think that's about all I had.
Do mine have one more? I'm sorry. It was, it's quick. Uh, your light, uh, event had me remember this one. Um, does everyone remember when they, we lost the power up in Ward 1, uh, the High Street pole snapped?
Yeah.
Uh, I think we lost a, a light there.
I, uh, I had them put it back.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, because, um.
If it was in that area, was it farther down the street?
No, it, it, no, it's right in that, right in that area.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, this was about a month ago. We, I talked about it with one of the residents up there and they said, well, we, we lost a light or something. Maybe it was about two months ago. And we lost.
We might have moved it because we put it on every other pole. It wasn't through next to each other and one of them came out and I told GMP to do it every other pole.
Because they said it was looking pretty dark up there.
And that same spot, there was a snapped pole that, as far as I know, is still there.
Uh, it's the other utility, it's the telecommunications that haven't gotten off yet.
I know you've had conversations, Marty.
So I, uh, I had a conversation with Fremont Power. And they're waiting for consolidated Comcast and Xfinity or, um, details to come off. And the last one off is responsible for the pole. I reached out to Consolidated. They said, yes, it's on the radar, but they are more interested in jobs that pay than doing jobs that don't pay.